Good morning and welcome to regularly scheduled meeting of the Minneapolis City Council. My name is Barbara Johnson, Minneapolis City Council President, and I have the pleasure today of introducing a couple folks who are going to give the city of Minneapolis an award. So we're really pleased about that, and it's actually recognizing us for our good use of the Legacy Fund grants that are available across the state of Minnesota. So I'll introduce Sheila Smith, who is with Minnesota Citizens for the Arts.
Thank you, city council members, for giving us just a little bit of your time this morning. I'm Sheila Smith from Minnesota Citizens for the Arts, and Liz here from Conservation Minnesota. We are going around the state and recognizing cities whose citizens are taking great advantage of the Legacy Amendment for the betterment of their city and for the, to increase access to their citizens to arts opportunities and the great outdoors. So in that spirit, we hereby declare Minneapolis to be a legacy destination symbolized by this award. The citizens and nonprofits of Minneapolis have been extraordinarily successful in accessing legacy funds for the betterment of your city. Your arts and history organizations are thriving as a result of the infusion of legacy funds to the area via the Minnesota State Arts Board and regional arts councils. The Legacy Arts and Culture Fund has supported arts access across the city, from performances of Pangaea World Theater and the Guthrie Theater, to music classes provided by McPhail Center for Music, to supporting access to the Great Walker and Minneapolis Arts Museums, from the Capri Theater and Juxtaposition in Northeast, to the Cedar Cultural Center and Mixed Blood near the U, to Intermediate Arts and Jungle on Lyndale, to the Heart of the Beast on Lake Street, to the Cole Center downtown, to increasing access to all kinds of smaller arts organizations and arts programs in social service organizations in every corner of the city. These activities bring people in from other places who spend money in shops and restaurants citywide. Your arts organizations through legacy funds enhance the quality of life and provide educational opportunities for residents and visitors alike. Minneapolis is also benefiting greatly from the area's great natural resources, and legacy dollars are going to projects that protect and enhance the outdoors in your area. For example, the Minneapolis Park and Rec Board is running a multi-year project to improve Above the Falls Regional Park. Funding has been used to acquire more land for trails and to improve trail shoreline and play areas to increase park use in Minneapolis. And eventually, Above the Falls Regional Park will connect North Mississippi Regional Park and the Central Mississippi Riverfront Regional Park, creating a continuous regional park system along the upper Mississippi River. How many times can you say Mississippi in one sentence? Another great project funded by the Legacy Fund with the Park and Rec Board is for Nacoma's Hiawatha Regional Park. This project will construct trails, paths, seedings, and concessions, as well as make shoreline improvements and rehabilitate play areas. Updates and improvements are based on the goal of increasing park visits throughout Minneapolis. So through the Clean Water, Land, and Legacy Amendment, the citizens of Minneapolis and the surrounding area are benefiting greatly from this investment, and so it stands as one of Minnesota's great legacy destinations. This investment helps to preserve the past, highlight the present, and will keep the Minneapolis arts and outdoors legacy going strong into the future. Thank you so much for the time this morning.
And Liz, would you like to say something?
Sheila covered most of it today, so we're just glad to be here. Thank you.
Well, you know, I, oh, great, great. That's very, very good, because I just will point out, you know, Minneapolis is a great generator of sales tax. So, you know, we have, we have kept our eye on the spending through the Legacy Amendment because, you know, it is important. We don't always think about our city, our fully developed city, as being a place where natural resources are so important. And because we are a fully developed city, they're even more important, you know? And to have spaces in our city where children can enjoy the outdoors and get a sense of how important the environment is to them, I think it's really important. So we thank you. Our citizens are very engaged in the arts. Actually, one of my daughters has done one of the panels for Citizens for the Arts, one of the rating panels, and I think it's been a really beneficial amendment for our state, and we need to keep highlighting what's done with those dollars. So thank you very much, and we're pleased our citizens are accessing those dollars. Thank you very much.
We're hoping we can get a quick photo with the council.
Sure, sure. Do you want, do you want to come back here and?
I don't know how, if everybody up there would switch together.
We can do that.
Okay. Sure. No problem.
Yep. We'll do that. Thank you.
All right. One, two, three. One more. All right. Great.
Counsel to order. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Glidden.
Here.
Yang.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Quincy.
Here.
Worsami.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
Frye.
Here.
Palmisano.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Kano. There are 13 members present.
We are all present this morning. Next item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. Any changes, additions? Seeing none, a motion to approve the adoption of the agendas in order?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that carries. Next, we have acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting and the adjourned session of May 23, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that carries. We have referral of petitions and communications and reports to the city officers to proper committees and departments.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that carries. Next, we have committee of the whole report, and that committee is chaired by the council vice president, Elizabeth Glidden. Excuse me. I was called the Lilligrin.
Okay. All right. My name is Elizabeth Glidden, and, and there are two items on the agenda for approval today. The first is passage of a resolution declaring the city of Minneapolis's commitment to a performance measurement system, and the second are amendments relating to 24 team polling places specific toward Precinct 5, and I will move approval of both items.
Council vice president moved the, has moved the committee of the whole report. Any discussion on those items? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Here.
Worsami.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
Frye.
Here.
Palmisano.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Kano.
Here.
President Johnson.
Here.
There are 13 ayes on the report except for number two, which has 12 ayes and one nay.
That report is adopted. Next, we have Health, Energy, and Community Engagement with that committee's chair, council member Gordon.
Thank you, Madam President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing three items forward for approval today. The first is approving two appointments to the Minneapolis Public Health Advisory Committee for terms to expire December 31. Sayad Abdalahi from Ward 3, and Sylvia Perez as mayor's appointment. Second item is authorizing application for a three-year grant from the Office of Healthy Homes and Lead Hazard Control not to exceed $3,400,000 to provide lead hazard reduction and health and safety improvements to 300 homes in Minneapolis. And the third and final item is authorizing application for a three-year grant from the Office of Minority Health not to exceed $1,500,000 for the purpose of supporting an evidence-based program to address unhealthy behaviors in at-risk minority male youth. I'll move all three items forward for approval.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the three items from the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee. Anyone want to pull anything off? Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Intergovernmental Relations Report, and that committee is chaired by the council vice president, Glidden.
Thank you, Madam President. There is one item before the city council for today, and this is a proposed charter amendment amending the filing fee amounts for municipal elections such that the filing fee for mayor would be $250, for council member it would be $100, for board of estimate and taxation member it would be $20, and for park and recreation commissioner it would be $50. And I would move approval of this item, and with permission of the chair, I'd like to make some comments.
Councilmember Glidden has moved the Intergovernmental Relations Report. Any discussion? Well, I'm sorry, she wants to discuss. Go ahead.
Thank you. So just to refresh for some of us, the discussion about the city of Minneapolis filing fees for municipal offices really began in earnest early last year when, in a report from our own election staff, it was identified that the city of Minneapolis was frankly a bit out of step with other municipalities in the state of Minnesota in terms of the amount of our filing fee for certain offices. There was some discussion within the city council at some of our public meetings about whether or not we would consider a charter amendment, and from some of the comments that were made in, by the city council at that time, I think it's fair to say we felt it was unwise in the middle of an election year to make changes to the filing fees. This item, however, was one where I feel on a personal basis, I made a promise to the Charter Commission that if they made, they proposed this to come forward, that I would put it on the agenda for us to vote on it, and we will see what happens today when we, when we vote on this amendment. Personally, I feel that this is a change that is long overdue, and I would support even a bit higher filing fee for some of the offices, again, to put us more in alignment with other major cities such as St. Paul. But sometimes these changes are ones that folks have different opinions on certainly to change the charter. It's a high bar, as it should be, and takes all 13 council members to do so without going to the voters for that change. If today the vote fails, what will happen is the Charter Commission then has sufficient time to put this change on the ballot, and my understanding is that they would intend to do so. So thank you to my colleagues for considering.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, and this has been an issue that I've been involved with a long time. In fact, I think the first time that this came forward, I brought it forward when it was pretty close to the election. It was a recommendation that came from staff and also other advocates out there. I actually still have mixed feelings about it. At the time after I brought it forward, I withdrew it because of the timing looked bad, and at this point, I'm still wondering if the better route might not be to let the voters choose what should be on their ballot themselves and not have the sitting council members decide about what the appropriate fee is to the charter. I am curious about, however, if it goes back to the Charter Commission, I'm assuming then that would give them the opportunity to also change the filing fee so they could raise it, which is why I'm caught here, because I happen to be more supportive of these figures here and actually went back to the Charter Commission saying, I think if you lowered it, we might have a better chance of getting the 13 votes. I don't think we have a chance of getting the 13 votes today, but I just wanted to clarify, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the Charter Commission then would take this back and they'd have the opportunity to increase the fees and put something else on, on the ballot if they wanted to. I see the clerk nodding, so that's good enough for me.
Councilmember Gordon, Ms. Segal, what is your thought about Councilmember Gordon's inquiry?
Madam Chair, there is adequate time for us to get back to the Charter Commission for them to decide to put it on the ballot for this fall.
And they, can they change the amount?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. It is up to them what, they have full authority to decide what to put on the ballot.
Okay. Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. Now, with regards to what Councilmember Gordon says, for myself, I'd rather just let it go to the people and let the people decide if the filing fees are much higher, and the people decide that, I'd be okay with that. You know, I have two issues with this matter. One is just, you know, the proportionality of the council fees versus the mayoral fee, and also the second piece is just kind of, you know, a piece of democracy where I just think that, you know, we're making it less accessible for certain people, and I would just like that to be much more accessible. And so, you know, where we're at maybe isn't the right number, but I mean, the numbers that we have here, I'm not sure are the right numbers as well. So, you know, if the people decide and the people want a higher fee, I mean, even if we raise it to $1,000 or so, I mean, that's up to the people, but I'd rather just have them take care of that.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, we discussed this, I think, a year ago prior to the last election, and I was one of the people saying we shouldn't take it up prior to the last election because we were in the middle of the last election and it would look odd. I will say I am a proponent of higher fees, and in fact, the reason we have this in front of us is because Councilmember Gordon was not, and he told the Charter Commission, put the fees at this level and I'll support it, and they did, and now we're saying to them, well, even if you did that, now we don't even agree with that. Even if only one person says no, it's essentially saying the council doesn't agree to that. So I kind of feel like my point of view wins. We'll put this on the ballot, the Charter Commission will likely propose fees that are even higher, and the public will pass it. And so just as long as we understand what the outcome will be, those that are interested in fairness and proportionality and making sure it's not inaccessible, run the risk of having to run a campaign trying to explain that, and that in and of itself involves money, and trying to run a charter campaign, those of us who have been involved in it know what it takes, and the people who are proposing raising the fee won't have to do anything, because anyone who comes in and reads it will likely vote for it. So I don't see how this does anything other than push the fees higher. So if that's what we want, vote no. If not, then you might want to consider voting 13-0 for this, because this is probably the lowest fee you're going to see, and in addition to that, it kind of thumbs our noses at the Charter Commission who has spent now almost two years working on this issue. Why are they working on this issue? Because the public said the fees were too low, because the fees are inconsistent with what's happening around the region, including in St. Paul. And people like me kind of shut up about it because we felt that this was a compromise, but if it's really not a compromise and everyone agrees, that everyone can agree with, then be expecting something that's going to not only be much higher, but also, in my opinion, somewhat thumbing our noses at the people who volunteer to be on the Charter Commission and have taken this item up, I would say, at least for the past 24 months.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to clarify that while I did communicate with the Charter Commission and looked at this and tried to find this compromise, when I went back and reported to them on this possible compromise, I let them know that I did not think it would have the 13 votes that they wanted, and they still brought it for us to test, which is perfectly fine and reasonable, but I just wanted to be clear that I never tried to represent that I thought I had a unanimous support from the council for the lower fees either, so they were aware of that.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm supportive of these changes to raise the fees. I believe my dog permit for the dog park costs more, along with my parking permit at the park, and, you know, running for office, it costs money, it takes a lot of time, it's a big investment, and I think the question of, does this make democracy less accessible? To me, if you're running for a job, you need to be serious about that and prepared for that job. I think some people see being on the ballot or being in the race as an opportunity to get ideas out there and to maybe sway some of the other candidates. I think that's true, but at the same time, they also need to be prepared to run for that job. And I've, in talking with colleagues, even said, hey, you know, I'd be fine if it was a petition, because if you can't go out and get several hundred signatures, you're definitely not going to get several thousand votes, which is what it's going to take to actually win an election. And for a lot of people that run, they know that the campaign starts far before you end up filing for office, and so you have that time to build that support and see if you'll have a serious shot or not at this. So I don't think $100 by any means would make democracy less accessible or stand as a barrier to anyone participating as a serious candidate in an election. And frankly, I wonder if we have too many candidates on the ballot, if a small portion of the population, if that's not a barrier to their participation just because it is overwhelming. I know people can argue all day about that, but I think that this is fair and reasonable, and it makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk.
Madam President, procedurally for the council, I wanted to elaborate a bit on the referendum process. If the council doesn't pass this on a unanimous vote today, and if the council chooses to remand this back to the Charter Commission for its consideration, the process is for the Charter Commission to draft a ballot question and then submit it back to you through your IGR committee. The IGR committee has the choice of accepting the ballot language that is drafted by the Charter Commission or substituting its own language, and ultimately, the council can choose whether it submits the question drafted by the Charter Commission, including amounts, or the question drafted by its IGR committee, including amounts. So if we send this back to the Charter Commission, it will come back to this body for final approval before getting on the ballot, and that would include the language that goes on the ballot, as well as the specific amounts for each of those municipal offices.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. Just briefly, I wanted to express why I support this change. While door knocking extensively this past campaign season, I heard many times that people were completely overwhelmed by the number of candidates for the various offices, particularly the mayoral office this year, and were not going to vote because they were just so overwhelmed by the number of choices. And we have a very difficult time in turnout for municipal elections already. I just don't want to create any more barriers for the many people to vote, so I actually see this, like many people have expressed, as a way to make sure that we're not creating barriers for people to vote, which is such an important part of our local elections and democracy. So I see this as opening up democracy. Thank you.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Carl, thank you very much for your explanation. What that says to me is there's more playing around with the Charter Commission, not less. So essentially, we vote no, we send it back to them, they're annoyed with us, rightfully. They send us the language, we turn around and change the language yet again, who knows what. That will then be involved in negotiating fees for our own offices, which I really don't like, and then we're going to send it on to the voters. The cleanest thing to do is to pass it today. If we don't do that, it becomes a bigger political football, and to be honest, one, I am not interested in negotiating.
Councilmember Palmisano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One other point of interest that I just want to point out is that the number of signatures needed to run without any filing fee hasn't changed in this, and I see that as an appropriate access point for those that can't afford whatever barrier or fee is there. Thanks.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Nay.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
No.
Kano.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes on the report except for number two, which has 12 ayes and one nay.
That report is adopted. Next, we have Health, Energy, and Community Engagement with that committee's chair, council member Gordon.
Thank you, Madam President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing three items forward for approval today. The first is approving two appointments to the Minneapolis Public Health Advisory Committee for terms to expire December 31. Sayad Abdalahi from Ward 3, and Sylvia Perez as a mayor's appointment. Second item is authorizing application for a three-year grant from the Office of Healthy Homes and Lead Hazard Control not to exceed $3,400,000 to provide lead hazard reduction and health and safety improvements to 300 homes in Minneapolis. And the third and final item is authorizing application for a three-year grant from the Office of Minority Health not to exceed $1,500,000 for the purpose of supporting an evidence-based program to address unhealthy behaviors in at-risk minority male youth. I'll move all three items forward for approval.
Councilmember Gordon. Has moved the three items from the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee. Anyone want to pull anything off? Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Nay.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
No.
Kano.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes and 2 nays.
That will be forwarded to the Charter Commission. It fails for lack of unanimous vote. Next item is the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report with that committee's chair, councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. We have two items for approval. The first item is authorize acceptance of the U.S. Department of Justice 2014 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, a work for funding through Hennepin County, which is in the amount of $275,500.
Madam President, procedurally for the council, I wanted to elaborate a bit on the referendum process. If the council doesn't pass this on a unanimous vote today, and if the council chooses to remand this back to the Charter Commission for its consideration, the process is for the Charter Commission to draft a ballot question and then submit it back to you through your IGR committee. The IGR committee has the choice of accepting the ballot language that is drafted by the Charter Commission or substituting its own language. And ultimately, the council can choose whether it submits the question drafted by the Charter Commission, including amounts, or the question drafted by its IGR committee, including amounts. So, if we send this back to the Charter Commission, it will come back to this body for final approval before getting on the ballot, and that would include the language that goes on the ballot, as well as the specific amounts for each of those municipal offices.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. Just briefly, I wanted to express why I support this change. While door knocking extensively this past campaign season, I heard many times that people were completely overwhelmed by the number of candidates for the various offices, particularly the mayoral office this year, and were not going to vote because they were just so overwhelmed by the number of choices. And we have a very difficult time in turnout for municipal elections already. I just don't want to create any more barriers for the many people to vote. So, I actually see this, like many people have expressed, as a way to make sure that we're not creating barriers for people to vote, which is such an important part of our local elections and democracy. So, I see this as opening up democracy. Thank you.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Carl, thank you very much for your explanation. What that says to me is this is more playing around with the Charter Commission, not less. So, essentially, we vote no, we send it back to them, they're annoyed with us, rightfully. They send us the language, we turn around and change the language yet again. Who knows what? That will then be involved in negotiating fees for our own offices, which I really don't like, and then we're going to send it on to the voters. The cleanest thing to do is to pass it today. If we don't do that, it becomes a bigger political football, and to be honest, one, I am not interested in negotiating.
Councilmember Palmisano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One other point of interest that I just want to point out is that the number of signatures needed to run without any filing fee hasn't changed in this, and I see that as an appropriate access point for those that can't afford whatever barrier or fee is there. Thanks.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, a clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Nay.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Warsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes and 2 nays.
That will be forwarded to the Charter Commission. It fails for lack of unanimous vote. Next item is the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. With that, committee's chair, Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. We have two items for approval. The first item is to authorize acceptance of the U.S. Department of Justice 2014 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, award for funding through Hennepin County, which is in the amount of $275,540, and a passage of resolution approving appropriation. And number two is to authorize a contract with the University of Minnesota College of Veterinary Medicine for $22,595 to receive canine veterinary care for the period July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015, and I will move for approval of both items.
Councilmember Yang has moved the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. Anyone want to pull anything off or discuss either of those items? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Warsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Transportation and Public Works Report with that committee's chair, Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee of Transportation Public Works for its eight items today. Item one is the I-35 South Tunnel Rehabilitation Project, which is an authorization to execute a cooperative construction agreement with MnDOT for that project. Item two is the Critical Parking Area Number 28 Modification, and that's to pass an ordinance amending the modification of the Critical Parking Area CPA 28 by removing both sides of the 5,700 block of Boston Terrace from the CPA and stipulating that residents of Boston Terrace cannot purchase CPA 28 permits. Item three is the list of Bicycle Advisory Committee Appointments. The list is Sarah Schleting of Ward One, Hyatt Ahmed, Chris Lind, Willie Lumpkins, Georgiana Yantos, Bob Hain, Richard Anderson, Juana Sandoval, Luis, Jose Luis, Villa Senor, Vie Senor, Scott Snelling, Paul Friends, Nicholas Massan, and Bill Dooley. Item four is approve of the application of a large block event for the Somali Independence Day, June 21, 2014. Item five is Bridge 9 Pier 3 repairs. The following are referred to Ways and Means Committee. Item six is the Central Corridor Green Light Project, and it's to authorize an execution of operation and maintenance agreement with the University of Minnesota, Hennepin County. Metropolitan Council will cover the university areas of the project, negotiate execution of the operation maintenance agreement with those parties, authorize execution of Amendment Two for the subordinate funding agreement with those parties, and authorize execution of SFA 24 with the Metropolitan Council. Item seven regards the St. Anthony Parkway Bridge Project, and that's authorized execution of an overpass agreement with Burlington Northern Santa Fe relating to their contribution of $4,500,000 for that bridge design replacement project, and execution of easements transferring ownership of the existing bridge to the city, and passage of resolution authorizing acceptance of funds, increasing appropriation and revenue source for the project by the set amount. This vote will require nine votes for approval. And then the final is accept a single bit of contact engineered solutions to furnish and deliver grit chamber to the surface water and sewer division. Forward all items for approval, Madam President.
Councilmember Reich has moved the Transportation Public Works Report. Anyone want to pull anything off or discuss any of those items? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Warsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Zoning and Planning Report with that committee's chair, Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have two items to forward from the Zoning and Planning Committee. Item number one is the Zoning Code Text Amendment portion of the outdoor sales and display changes. This is passage of ordinances amending Title 20 of the Minneapolis Code of Ordnances to allow the sale and display of goods outside of business establishments. And item number two is regarding 80 Broadway Street Northeast to deny the appeal by Diane Hofstadter on behalf of a group of people of the decision of the City Planning Commission approving the conditional use permit and site plan review to allow a liquor store subject to conditions related to alternative compliance for greening and a curb cut. And I will forward both items.
Councilmember Bender has moved both items on the zoning and planning report. Any discussion on either of those items? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Warsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Zoning and Planning Report with that committee's chair, Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have two items to forward from the Zoning and Planning Committee. Item number one is the Zoning Code Text Amendment portion of the outdoor sales and display changes. This is passage of ordinances amending Title 20 of the Minneapolis Code of Ordnances to allow the sale and display of goods outside of business establishments. And item number two is regarding 80 Broadway Street Northeast to deny the appeal by Diane Hofstadter on behalf of a group of people of the decision of the City Planning Commission approving the conditional use permit and site plan review to allow a liquor store subject to conditions related to alternative compliance for greening and a curb cut. And I will forward both items.
Councilmember Bender has moved both items on the zoning and planning report. Any discussion on either of those items? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Warsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes on the report except for number two, which has 12 ayes and one nay.
That report is adopted. Next, we have resolutions, and the first is a resolution from Leonard Street and Diner on behalf of LifeSource vacating, I'm sorry, vacating multiple drainage and utility easements for the property located at 2225 and 2313 West River Road for LifeSource. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Under motions, we have a payroll motion by Councilmember Quincy that regular payrolls of city employees under council jurisdiction for the month of July 2014 be approved and ordered paid. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have a motion by Councilmember Glidden to amend subsection D of the Public Safety, Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report to add Councilmember Warsami as a member of the Racial Equity Work Group. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Under unfinished business, we have an ordinance introduction pursuant to notice by Councilmember Palmisano, Glidden, and Frye introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to liquor and beer for first reading and referral to the Community Development Regulatory Services Committee, amending provisions affected by and in response to potential charter amendment regarding food to alcohol sales for certain restaurants. Any discussion on that ordinance introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have an ordinance introduction pursuant to notice by Councilmember Andrew Johnson to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to the food code for first reading and referral to Health Environment and Community Engagement Committee repealing Chapter 194. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have under new business, the city charter, a transmittal letter from the Charter Committee recommending a commission, recommending that amendment to the Minneapolis City Charter plain language revision be submitted to the qualified voters of the city of Minneapolis at the gubernatorial general election to be held November 4, 2014, and that transmittal be referred to the Intergovernmental Relations Committee. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. We have Councilmember Reich giving notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the city council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to liquor and beer, amending the section relating to brewer taprooms to allow the sale of beverage alcohol produced by the brewer on or off the premises. That notice is given. Councilmember Palmisano gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the city council a subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to the zoning code, amending regulations for one to four unit residential development. That notice is given. Councilmember Bender gives notice of intent to introduce at the next meeting of the city council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to the zoning code, establishing regulations for accessory dwelling units. That notice is given. And Councilmember Reich gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the city council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to health and sanitation, expanding the authority of the Department of Public Works of solid waste and recycling to provide cleanup and charge for excessive solid waste at residential properties with more than four units and non-residential properties in the city of Minneapolis. That notice is given. Councilmember Palmisano gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the city council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to the building code, amending provisions related to wrecking and new construction of two-family, single and two-family dwellings. That notice is given. Councilmember Palmisano gives notice of intent to introduce at the next meeting of the city council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to air pollution and environmental protection, amending provisions related to wrecking and new construction of single and two-family dwellings. That notice is given. Councilmember Palmisano gives notice of intent to introduce at the next city council meeting the matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to the heritage preservation regulations, amending the definitions. That notice is given. Councilmember Glidden is going to introduce, or gives the, oh, she introduces an ordinance, the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to license and business regulations for first reading and referral to the Community Development Regulatory Services Committee, adding a new chapter, 282, entitled Commercial Donation and Collection Vins. And Councilmember Frye gives notice of intent to introduce at the next meeting of the city council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to license and business regulations, tree services, tree servicing, amending the International Society of Arbor, Arbor Culture, Arbor Culture certification. So, that notice is given.
We need to vote on.
We need to vote on, on, on the, which unanimous consent?
Number nine.
Number nine. Oh, I see. Thank you. On number nine, unanimous consent is required, which is the motion by Councilmember Glidden to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code. And we have a couple other, actually, because everything else is in.
And then a regular vote on the ordinance. Oh, we already voted on the ordinance introduction.
Just nine? Just nine? Okay. On item nine, then, on the ordinance introduction, any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. And with that, we have gone through our new business. Next item is announcements. Anyone have any announcements? And I'm going to look at Councilmember Glidden's screen because mine's gone off. So, Councilmember Andrew Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As is the case with summer, there's a lot of events and fun things going on, and I'll actually defer, if Councilmember Reich wants to mention the big Green Line opening tomorrow and speak about that, but I'd just also like to throw out that the Stone Arch Bridge Festival is going on this weekend, along with Northern Spark, which are two great events for our art community, and they'll be a lot of fun. So, I hope people can make it out for those.
Councilmember Glidden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There is an amazing amount of events going on, so we know summer is in full swing. One in South Minneapolis, that's in addition to everything else, is on Saturday of this weekend, tomorrow, is the 38th in Chicago Festival, which is combined with another event that's called Arts on Chicago. So, there'll be a lot of great arts events and music on Chicago Avenue in the 3,700 block from about 11 until 3:00. Family-friendly event.
Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. While we're mentioning events, I do want to mention that tomorrow is Juneteenth at North Mississippi Regional Park, and I didn't want this opportunity to pass without mentioning